Meeting of the zoning commission, regular meeting. To order. We have one missing commissioner. So I will appoint Joe to sit for Mike Doyle.
Sorry.
And, let's see. First order of business is to consider the minutes of the April 15 meeting. Anybody have any comments or corrections?
Dave, I read the minutes and I think they're satisfactory as they were submitted. So I move approval as they were submitted.
I would second that.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, carries, six, nothing. Okay. We have no public hearings. We have two items on the agenda for which we have no action because the public hearings are scheduled. One is for June 3rd, one is for May 20th. The third item is an application for a sign permit for Drake Hill Mall Monument Sign on the property located at 710-720 Hot Meadow Street. They are in conformance with our regulations by courtesy of the ZBA. Mr. Whitmer, would you?
Good evening. Thank you for coming today. As you had mentioned, this was reviewed and previously approved by ZBA. This is a proposed monument sign at the Drake Hill Mall that will be repusing the existing building. This is the existing that is there right now with the ground lighting effect. This is what is being proposed right now. It was approved by ZBA. They said two issues. One is it exceeds the allowable height. It also exceeds the allowable square footage for signage. The proposed sign, however, is lower than what was there originally. The existing is 114 inches and the proposed is only 97.5. So that was viewed very favorably by ZBA. This is a brick base that we're having with a bluestone cap. We do have a light fixture in this sign that actually uplights and washes the sign itself. Here's the two posts and a white PVC cap on here. We have the numbers in brushed aluminum and then, of course, the tenant signage itself. If somebody noticed, it's no longer Peaberry Cafe. That's true. Back in 2005, when it was developed, I'm too old for the tenants, but that will be certainly updated.
To onus?
To onus, exactly. Exactly. This was heard earlier this evening by Design Review, which provided a favorable recommendation. So it's here for your review. There is a locust plan that's included with this that shows that it's going in the same location as the existing sign. There'll also be some landscaping around the base of the sign as there is the sign here typically. This was actually taken at the end of the season, so it's not showing the plantings that are typically there. That is what we're proposing before you this evening.
Okay. And Design Review did give us a favorable recommendation.
That is correct.
No conditions?
No conditions or comments from the board.
Did they say anything about the colors?
No, but I will tell you, thank you for mentioning that. This is the beginning of what we call the Unified Sign Plan for the development. I have an additional monument sign that I'll show you. We did get approval on a new sign for Fitzgerald's on the building itself, which doesn't need to be heard by zoning, which is also following this language. And then as this moves forward, we're all going to probably be coming back and showing you the actual tenant signage on the building itself for the other in-lines, which we're going to be changing and moving more toward this color. Or rather, the white signage itself or the colored letter upon it.
Joe?
I have a couple of questions, Dave.
Go ahead.
All right. First, I'm interested in whether you're familiar with the whole set of regulations that apply to the center code relative to signs.
To be honest with you, I've delved into it. However, I'm not going to say that I'm an expert on it in any sense. I know there's certain areas and different areas of the regulation. So I'll defer to you, please.
Okay. Well, first of all, there's a regulation that's been in effect since April 15th of 2011, eight years ago, that calls for actually a sign plan for every building, a common sign plan for every building that has multiple tenants. So I'm not sure if your suggestion a moment ago that there's a plan being developed of some sort, and this is representative of it, but that's eight years to develop a common sign plan for that building. And I don't want to misunderstand what you said, but I'm inferring that there is no common sign plan for that building right now.
That is correct. That is correct. I will say, this was originally proposed in 2012 and at that point, it was, we've actually shelved at the last minute because of...
That's okay. That's history, yeah. But I know that the, our colleagues on the zoning...
Design Review.
Oh, no, not. I wasn't going to talk about Design Review, but the variance was granted for, by ZBA, for a very specific provision of our code. It has to do with the size of the signs in our center district. And actually, it's a subsection B1E. And it's clear that that conversation's over. The variance was granted and so there's no point in the discussion about the sign, the size and whether, how far away it is from what our standard is. It's done. But we also have standards that call for, in the same section, there's a B1E, the letter E, that calls for consistency in the fonts within the common plan, font, graphics, colors. And there's no variance granted for B1E. So there is provision that calls for colors that are specifically allowed and they're not well represented in your work. And also the mix of fonts. I mean, I don't know what the common side plan, sign plan might look like when it's done, but that's, I think, probably, I'll just offer that it's not consistent with what I would expect to see in a common sign plan. The idea is to have some consistency in the fonts and not to have everybody's logo on the sign. So I guess I'm concerned that as we look at this, I'm not in agreement with assertions that that sign meets the Simmsbury zoning regulations. In my mind, it does not. And I don't know if there's anything that we could say about that, but you're not completely familiar with the regulations. You don't have a common side plan, sign plan. And I'm not sure why the folks on ZBA didn't raise these other issues when the application came in for only one issue, the size of the sign. There could have been application for several other factors represented here that are not consistent with our sign regulations. So I offered that as my thoughts at this time and, you know, I don't know what else to say about it except that it's not consistent with our regulation in all aspects.
Yeah, I confirm with that. It is not a common theme there at all. It's very hodgepodge. It's very unattractive. And so I'm going to end up voting against it because of that.
Well, if we had every building with multiple tenants in the center of town...
Yeah.
With, you know, an assortment of colors and logos and, I mean, the result would be just exactly what we don't want.
It's not the regs.
Mike, you have any comments about the, that ZBA did not address that particular...
No, no, they did not. Design Review did. We did ask about the color scheme and Design Review actually felt that the color scheme with the, let's say, the green background and white lettering, they felt it was going to lose its identity in the landscape and that they actually were okay with this multi-color, you know, corporate identity signage package as shown to the commission tonight. But, I mean, they are, they are a referral and an advisory opinion to you. So I will say that, you know, you have taken what they, you followed what they've recommended in the past or you've ignored it. So I guess it's up to the commission on that aspect, on the input for the background of the coloring in the sign.
Those are good points, Mike, because, you know, they're, again, going back to the actual regulation. The background shall be white or off-white. Next sentence. Border and font color shall be dark green, maroon, or black, except with permission of the zoning commission. That's what it says. So there's no allowance for, for instance, blue or, I'm not sure if Peachtree in their logo, if peach is the name of the color of their text, but, you know, this is fairly specific stuff and it's just not well represented there.
Well, I don't know. From my standpoint, I have driven around towns looking for a TD Bank and I'd be a lot more inclined to find it on that sign than on the one that's all the same font and all the same size. You know, if the purpose of a sign is to let people know what's there, I think having it a little different is an advantage while it might be deemed as ugly.
Then we're opening ourselves...
It's not within the reg though. You wouldn't want to have a reg if you're not going to follow the...
You're opening yourselves up, all the other signages that we've made stay within the regs now are able to be opened up. I mean, if we have a hot pink logo, you know, that comes in and it's going to be, you know, lime green and hot pink, then we're, I mean, we can't really...
What, what were you going to say?
The next application on your agenda is another sign?
Right.
Part of the Webster Bank Coldwell Banker, which was, there was an approval granted for this commission for the existing sign that's out there, which is blue coloring, not consistent with the regs. So you have deviated from your regs in the center and allowed some corporate identity. And we could, I don't want to intertwine those two issues, but just...
No. You're right, but I will just say, I guess, to this point, I don't disagree, the blue being their color and then we're staying blue. I think that's the other thing, though. This still is blue and more unified. It's all of two colors with a tiny bit of yellow and that is not. So that would be the only thing I would argue with the difference with the Webster-Coldwell sign.
Would the commission, and this is something to talk to Steve first to see if they're open to it, would you want to see something at a unified color scheme setup in that same size to see what it looks like? Because as the chairman pointed out, you may put it in that, the uniform color and then certain tenants such as TD Bank, just to use them as example, now they may be lost in the sea to see that, oh, this is the identification, where the TD Bank is located. Would you want to see something like that first?
I think that'd be helpful.
Well, I'm also curious how you have a unified sign for the whole complex if they're all using different fonts and they're all using different colors and they're, I mean, what is the unified, what is the unifying...
There isn't any.
Right.
There's no plan.
What's going to unify them? You know, we're still...
Excuse me for just one moment. We did, you know, we used to own the Simmsbury Town Shops across the street. We did a sign package over there. Kevin, maybe you remember if you've been down there. And we just, same size, different fonts, and allowed tenants to have different colors. That's why when you look across the street at the Simmsbury Town Shops...
So the size would be the...
Yeah, different colored, different colored font and different colored signs, you know? So we did that, you know, quite a few years ago. Tenants want to have a certain identity.
Before April 2011?
I'm not sure, Bruce.
Yeah, it was.
Like, I think that's, right or wrong, I think that's kind of where we are, is this is in the center.
Yeah.
And we all remarked, this is, I don't, I don't want to say, it's bright, it's, I think if we could see a different color, a rendering, I'm not, I guess I'd be okay with different fonts to identify if the colors were the same or something like that. You know, CVS can have that font if it was, you know, green and white or something like that. I just, it's just really tough. There's so much on that.
They spend...
So, yeah, so these companies rely, just to Dave's point, they rely on their branding. They spend lots of money on their colors and their logos and they're not going to change their branding to be...
No, their signs are on the building though.
We hear that all the time, though, and they will.
Right.
Certain tenants will do it and certain tenants won't go to that space.
I hear Dave's point, but again, this is our center code.
Yep.
It is a congested area. I think the signs do need to be cohesive. There should be a plan. And the sign, they're, obviously, the companies are represented on the building as well. So this is an identifier, but not the only identifier.
But the signs on the building are horrible.
Okay.
Those plans is...
In our opinion, they're horrible.
So that's next?
Same color. That's what we'd like to do. I mean, we were hoping to get approval on our pylon sign and then come back and, you know?
So maybe this is something that can work on her.
But then you move further away from our regulations. I mean, that's not, that's not our business unless there's interest in, you know, taking up a question of, is there something wrong with this regulation? Because if we're not ready to say there's something wrong with the regulation, having a red, red lettering, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, that, it doesn't work in our existing regulation.
Well...
But that doesn't mean times don't change.
No, and to your point, the only thing now that we're going to have in that complex, the only similarity, these are different colors, those are all different colors, and the only thing that would be unifying is just the manner in which it's the brick bottom and then having the white PVC top.
Maybe same materials, same design.
And a controlled size.
Yeah.
But, you know, CVS is red. I mean, if you don't, you're looking for CVS...
Right. I don't know that CVS is red.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Then are we looking to change...
I mean, I see CVS on the other sign and it's there. It looks the same to me.
I know, but I...
So are we looking to change the regulations then?
Do we really think we can give the tenant on Hot Meadow Street their own color?
Color, yeah.
No.
That's why we have the reg.
There's some sort of standard. There has to be.
Well, but there's, I, what was the zoning commission's discretion there?
With which one?
The size.
With the sign reg, there was something said that we had discretion to permit a different font or a different color?
It said, "Font color shall be dark green, maroon, black," or black. So that's four colors, dark green, maroon, black. No, that's three colors, excuse me. Three colors, except with permission of the zoning commission. Background shall be white or off-white.
I guess my, I guess my request, sorry, taking what, you know, we were all kind of talking about here, is just that if, if staff could work and we could come up with something, I don't know if there's something else, another way to do this or...
Would it kill you guys to wait two weeks on this sign?
Well, you know, I'm not going to speak for Steve on that, but I mean, one of the things that obviously we're running into here and the, with why this is being proposed at this point in time is because of the changes that we've seen with retail. And the fact that this is a center, if you will, and the desire by retailers, you've seen, there's a tremendous amount of noise on Hot Meadow, if you go visual noise in this area.
Sure.
I presented photos before of all different signage and landscaping and everything else. Providing something that the retailers can be seen and identified from in a typical and appropriate retail setting is what's really being requested here. You know, because the retailers have their own branding, because they have their own colors and because there's a desire to stay here and be seen and be successful, you know, that's really what's driving a lot of this. This has been, you know, I guess about, since 2012, so you do the math, what, seven, eight years in process, that, you know, there's a real desire to see something like this happen. I know the retailers have been...
And we're honestly hoping to do this simultaneously as a storefront that we're doing for Fitzgerald's.
So I'll just offer that.
Well, I get, I'm hoping you can work with us and, again, to Bruce's point with, then give us a united, you know, a unified sign plan. Give us all of what you can. If you're working with Fitzgerald's and you're making changes...
Well, you can see Fitzgerald's, we have that. Actually, Matt has that.
Can I show them that?
Yeah. And again, I don't, I don't want to speak for the commission. I think I would be okay with identifying fonts if it was unified in color. So if it was the same background...
They want the color than the fonts.
That's, we're in the center. I mean...
I mean, retailers are getting killed by Amazon, any, every advantage they can get today, where you're going to have vacancies all over town. I don't know if you try to have some color on your sign or vacancies all over town, but if it's blending in just those...
Really difficult for tenants to see, David.
I'm sure there's a compromise. I'm sure there's something we can do and be, like you said, to your point, if you, this started in 2012, you know, if we can continue the discussion for another week or two. Do you want to show us Fitzgerald's or...
Well, yeah, actually Fitzgerald's was approved by DRB and because we haven't changed the size, it's actually not up for evaluation this evening, but it certainly will show you where we're heading for this. And this is a halo letter. It's aluminum, you know, white, pin-mounted letter. It's really indicative of what you, what you see today. I don't have the, well, maybe I do. Yeah, here's the existing sign right now, so you can see how and why we're moving away from, you know, what's currently there.
So this is just letters?
This is just letters, yeah. On the wood background, you know, which is... Which more what you'd expect to see in a higher-end, you know, region such as this. You know, it's certainly going to be very attractive and have a very, very different look than the board sign that's there now. And then as...
So that doesn't even match this, then?
As far as color, no. And that's exactly what the retailers asked for.
Even their font, though? If you're, if we're going for branding?
That's pretty close, actually.
They updated that.
Oh, so this will be updated?
This was done in 2012.
Oh, we're still, okay, okay.
The actual tenant signage itself, everything will be consistent with the sign on the wall. But they certainly updated it from, you know, what's currently there now.
Sure.
But I think that's reasonable to say that's the direction that's being looked at for the remainder of the, of the center.
So instead of wooden signs for the rest of the tenants as well, they would have...
We're going to increase the size of those signs. We want to pin-mount them and allow them to have different colors. So pin-mounting, they take the sign and they take pins behind it and they...
Yeah, they're dimensional.
Dimensional, so it gives all dimension, you know?
And all haloed lit, I believe, right? Is that...
No, they wouldn't all be haloed lit, no.
So we're going to have the color on the building, too?
That's exactly what we're going to do.
Yeah, so currently the signs are flat aluminum. They're not wood. They're aluminum panels with vinyl graphics on them. So they'd be now upgraded to acrylic dimensional letters, just like the Simmsbury Town Shops.
I think that'll look sharp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except do we have a unified sign plan?
Yeah, then all the signs will be the same on the building.
Well, but there'll be different fonts and different colors and different...
Right. They'll have their corporate identity, their corporate branding.
I understand that. It's just that the code right now doesn't...
Regulations says...
We couldn't, we couldn't follow the regulations unless you gave us permission.
The applicant must include the standards of consistency of all signs on the subject property with regard to colors.
So then are we looking at different codes?
Additional subheading. There are five of them. Letters and graphics style. Location, we're not debating location at this point. Materials are not there. And then the maximum dimensions. But the sign plan, absent the sign plan, your intention is just to bring these signs in when they're ready, one at a time. And this is only going to get worse.
No, we're going to bring in a second phase.
All one shot.
Yeah.
I'm not sure all one shot was the solution because you're so far away from compliance with the regulation.
Not to put you in the...
Everybody's looking at your mic.
No.
The question is, if we can pass on color and font, and we do that, then they're fine with the regulations.
Then we don't have regulations anymore because anybody can come to us and say, I want this. Because there it goes.
Right. It's not suggesting that we have latitude relative to the font because the font is supposed to be identified in the plan. But as to the color, it names three colors and then it says, in a sense, "except with permission of the zoning commission." So the zoning commission could approve orange or, you know, whatever we want. Peach color might be fine with some members of the commission. But we have latitude to approve colors that are picked by the design review board or by others if we want to. If we want to stick with the regulation, it's black, green, or maroon lettering. End of story. I mean, that's the regulation. I'm not making that up.
Okay, so the Uniform Sign Plan is something that I think we're saying is needed.
Well, some issues could have been wrestled to the ground if that work had been done first. Then by, you know, however it might have worked out, it would be done and rather than, you know, we're sort of at sea.
But the Unified Sign Plan is essentially going to be the same signage on top of, in the same color or the same font.
It needs to include the building signs as well as the street signs.
Right.
Oh, that's a good point. There has to be every sign on the site. So I think we're up to the point here where you could take a vote and it doesn't look very favorable in your, for your application as it now stands, or you could take another look at this and we could table it.
Can I ask, though, does the regulation even allow something like a pin-mounted letter? I mean, from what I'm hearing, I'm not even sure that that's...
I didn't even go there because I didn't know about that.
It sounds like we have to talk about it, too.
Right, that's a different sign. So we didn't have that to give you the details for that?
No, but it sounds like this is already approved. It doesn't need to go to zoning. So I guess I'm just saying if the sign...
That I don't know.
It was a reduction of sign. That, when we looked at that, it met the regs, so, because it would be a wall-mounted sign and there's, it allows for projections of the wall-mounted sign. That would, those, those letters such as that, that would meet the, what they were describing, would conform to the regs, although it's different from what's up there right now, the boards.
So he's saying you're okay with that?
You could carry that theme to the other tenants.
I understand that, but what I am saying is, does your Unified Sign Plan even accommodate that? So that whether or not I've gotten this approved, there might be issues beyond just the lettering color that we might need to be addressing. And I guess I'm questioning, you know, how flexible or how locked down is your, is your sign reg because it might not even be accommodating what we're, what we've already gotten approved.
I don't know that we can say without seeing. Do you know?
Well, that's right, yeah.
It's right there.
Just that? So white lettering and then is there a background?
No, it's mounted on the...
Just white?
There is no white background.
No, it's mounted on the building. Whatever's behind it is the material.
But it's actually wood and they're going to change the background.
You'd mentioned it's only a white background. So I'm not trying to split hairs here, but I'm just saying that if you want us to take a step back and do something, it sounds like maybe the unified, the sign regulation...
Actually, you're misunderstanding because it's up to you whether you want to do some more. I mean, we're looking at the application you submitted and so...
No, I think he's just asking for some...
We're hoping there's a way out of this that's, you know, everybody can live with.
He's just asking for some information, I think.
Mike, if the colors get approved by zoning and then is it automatically approved by this board, how's that work?
We are zoning.
We are zoning, DRB.
DRB is just advisory.
Advisory to zoning. The zoning is, as Bruce indicated earlier, there's some latitude that the commission has on other regs.
Just that one. It's the color.
Then you would even still, you would go for a uniform color, not individual...
Oh, absolutely.
Colors, yeah. So you could pick something other than black, black, blue.
Yes, but it sounds to me like our unified sign plan is something that either needs to be changed or this kind of thing can't happen.
Right. Which was the point.
Right. That's what the point of the regulation is, yes.
Right.
But to your point, even the Fitzgerald's sign really shouldn't happen because it doesn't have a white background. doesn't have a white background.
Which, which one are we talking about?
That, that one, right there, on the building.
Well, that one doesn't have a white background.
Because it's individual letters on the building.
Right.
No, there's not a white background.
But it doesn't have to, right, Kevin?
Your observation's accurate, right?
So it doesn't?
The background colors are white and off-white. So you wouldn't want to use white letters. If the font was your choice, you know, in a different combination.
But it sounds like we're, we're.
Sounds like we might need to talk.
Well, are all of the businesses going to have letters like this? Are they all going to be white?
No, they were going to be all the different colors.
The anchor tenants.
Yep.
Are, are signs like these?
These are pretty expensive signs, so like smaller tenants.
Yeah.
CVS probably want to change their sign. I think they have a white sign right now.
They just changed all their signs within the last year.
Right. Sure.
There's one thing, the coloring. All of that. It reads towards the freestanding signs. Background color shall be white or off-white, border not so much to the building mountain sign. There's also, you know, your maximum size of a, of a building, a sign is not to exceed 16 square feet, which we went through with the freestanding sign. So that, the comment on the regs for the background being solid white does not apply to the building mountain sign.
Oh, good.
It only applies to the freestanding signs, the way the regs read.
Cool.
Because it also talks, because for the size of the signs, which we went through with the Chamber of Commerce, the percentage of the wall that the sign could, could.
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
Right.
So we, we went over that, and therefore, you know, the background coloring was not a conversation, because it was more, is relevant to the freestanding sign. So, to get back to that, I understand the commission's concern, they want to see what it's going to look like carrying to the other tenants. Maybe that's a conversation we can have in order to salvage some of this from tonight. The other thing is just kind of hearing what the commission's saying, is maybe, it's something staff and the applicant talk about on alternative color schemes of the sign. At least we can have the conversation out of this room.
Okay.
Well, and maybe we need to have a conversation.
And then, maybe there's a, maybe there's a resolution, and furthermore, if, if we can't have a resolution, then we can report back to the group and say why we can't reach the resolution. And that way, and apologies, we'll just delay action on this item for two weeks, but, you know, at least this way, everyone will, will try to satisfy the regs by meeting on this one. If, if the parties are okay with that.
I think we have to be.
Okay.
And if the commission's okay with that. I would move the table, the application.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would also ask you to table 1924, then, so we do everything all at once, to make sure we don't have any other issues, so we're not having the same conversation we just had on the next application. That's, that's okay.
Before I move the table, oh, before I do that, though, is that the same property, or is it a different property?
That's actually a different property, technically.
Yeah, yeah. You could, but we'll table it just for consistency purposes, see if we get, know what it is. So I move that we table application 1924 to our next meeting.
I will second that.
Second by Joe again. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry six, nothing.
So we'll give you a call mic, correct?
Yeah.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Okay, and we have application 1925, which we have to table, because we're waiting for a response from Lisa Granby.
All right, I move that we table application 1925 to our next meeting.
I'll second it.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry six, nothing. Okay.
Correspondence?
Any correspondence?
You don't have correspondence in your packet. We are shooting to give you the draft zoning regulations for the next meeting, along with, as Robin kind of promised, a cheat sheet to say, here's all the substantive changes which have occurred from your existing regs to new regs. I'll have Carrie upload the digital document tomorrow to your packet, so that you can access it. If you just bookmark the email that gives you the link to our packets, and we'll have that in there. So you can kind of see, and then if you want to start sending comments directly to me about the new regs.
Sure, thanks.
So.
That's great, that's exciting.
Yeah.
Yes, remember, comments all go to staff, not.
Right.
Yeah, just one, just direct email to me. Do not CC the commission, so we don't, we're not having a meeting via email.
Nice.
Motion to adjourn.
I just have one question on that. I know, as an alternate, I also have, can make comments.
Yeah.
And do, okay, thank you. We just, those carries. On the, on the regs, because I know sometimes when there's a public hearing, and I'm an alternate, I can't comment, and so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, and same for Tom.
Gavin and Joe can comment, you can't.
And Tom.
Well, let me just raise a question about the next meeting, then, is going to be largely about the, well, maybe these guys will be ready to come back, but it's largely about the regulations, then, right?
No, you have a public hearing next, in two weeks.
Oh, that's the one on, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Well, my question really is, I think under ideal circumstances, we would do well to have some further conversation on this application.
Absolutely.
Before they're sitting here, and, I mean, not that they shouldn't be sitting here right now, but they left, but of their own choice. But I'm, I'm curious about what the vision is. We'll just have a back and forth and see what we can figure out next time we get.
Yeah, I think that would be great, Bruce, I do.
Well, the issue is fundamental. It's, it's either.
The regs.
There's a uniform sign plan that has colors and fonts that are all the same, or it's not. And how you accommodate difference like this.
Right.
Is, is not clear to me.
I think it is clear, if you don't.
You don't, or you change the regs, and you open yourself up to having any kind of sign that is.
Well, yeah, but we also have the argument that.
Right.
These guys are getting hammered every which way, retailers under the gun.
I'm sure.
And we have to be a little more responsive, I think, to what the world is doing out there.
Then you're changing the regs.
And we're changing the regs.
I'll throw a, I'm sorry, but because of the conversation, I'll throw a wrench in that with, across the street here, they don't have a unified sign plan like that. So we have one national coffee shop, but then we have all these small, they don't have any sign like this. So they're, they're up against the same thing of an Amazon, and all they have is their sign on their building, that's it, that's their identifier. And these are.
No monument sign out front.
And these are even smaller. And they're doing okay without this, and they're still up against an Amazon, too. So I just would throw.
I'm not going to make you buy a peach wave on Amazon.
I, I'm, I would just throw that up.
Or are they doing okay? And when they see this, are they going to come back to us and say, I want that kind of sign?
That's right. And I'm okay to have that discussion if we have come to that.
Then we should expect that the owner of the McDonald's franchise is going to be in here looking for his golden arches.
With arches, right.
The people who sat in his seats in 1968 said no.
Right.
Right. It's clear that the history was, we're not doing that.
Right.
But times change, and I think.
I just thought I could throw a complex.
That's what people expect from Simp'ri, though.
I know.
I just thought we could give a like comparison, in theory.
Yeah. And if there's some way to control it?
Well, I'd hate for them to go to the whole effort of doing a whole new plan if we're going to decide right now that we're not going to.
Yeah, I think, let them at least get a pen to the paper and try to address some of their issues.
Yeah, not making any decisions tonight, just giving a comparison, that was it.
I mean, it's just, it's just one or the other, in my opinion.